Welcome to the August fifth, two thousand twenty-four Troy City Council meeting. We request that you silence your cell phones for the meeting. And tonight's invocation and pledge will be led by Mr. Todd Seaver. Please stand.
Please stand. God our Father, guide us today with the tenets of wisdom and love. In scripture you advise that governing authorities were established to preserve peace, order, and justice. Therefore, we pray today for our mayor, for the various levels of the city officials that are here, for our first responders, for our citizens, and in particular for this assembled council, that you graciously grant discernment and compassion to deliberate and make decisions that impact our community. And may our actions be guided by the best interest of Troy and its residents. Father, please watch over our citizens everywhere so that we may enjoy the freedom of ser- the freedoms and peace offered by your grace. Amen.
Motion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Present.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes. Here.
Mr. Widdon?
Move to excuse Mr. Widdon. Second.
Motion to excuse Mr. Widdon by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon is excused.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a public hearing on ordinance number oh twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Clear that meeting open. Anybody would like to speak?
I will read the type first.
That's right. You gotta read stuff. That'd be helpful. I'll slow down.
Ordinance number oh twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, ordinance changing the zoning of parcel numbers D O eight, one oh one, eight one six, and D O eight, oh oh six, oh oh oh, located at or near five one eight East Water Street in the city of Troy, Ohio, from M two to O R one. I will also note that we did receive an email from Carrie Walters in support of the rezoning.
Thank you. Any of those that would like to come forward and make positive comments or support the rezoning, feel free. And then we will have anyone that may be against the zoning. Seeing no one coming up, one way or the other, we will close the.
You didn't ask?
Huh?
I think we need to ask the negative people.
Positive and the negative, and nobody came up. So. Anybody want to speak on the zoning at all? Hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, could you read the summary of the minutes of July fifteenth, please?
Minutes of council, July fifteen, twenty twenty-four. There was a presentation regarding the Rumpke Recycling Award Program. Committee reports, streets and sidewalks. Committee recommends that legislation be prepared authorizing an application for OPWC funding for the West Market Streets State Route Fifty-Five Corridor Improvement Project Phase One. Personnel committee provided an oral report regarding appointments and an appointment and reappointments to the City Beautification Committee, all of which were approved. Resolution number R thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four, application to OPWC was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number oh twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, rezoning at five one eight East Water Street was given first hearing. Following various comments, council recessed into executive session, returned to regular session, and adjourned at seven fifty-two P M.
Move to accept. Second minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, we have a few from the Community Economic Development Committee. Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, number one, the committee, on July twenty-ninth, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee, that a new loan be approved for the, from the Small Business Development, SBD Revolving Loan Fund, to the owners of Fermentum Enterprises LLC, for funds to assist with the purchase of additional equipment to operate Crafted and Cured at Eight South Market Street. This committee recommends that the legislation be prepared authorizing the approval of a SBD loan to Fermentum Enterprises LLC based on the terms recommended by the Loan Review Committee, as noted in the detailed report, and that the Director of Public Service and Safety be authorized to execute any related documents. This committee further supports emergency legislation so that the loan can be approved without delay and the equipment ordered, and this was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chair.
I have a question.
Can I ask some questions?
Mr. Seaver?
Uh, just to put on record and to validate, then, the loan for Fermentum is for equipment, and that is from their subsequent purchase of the Crafted and Cured building, correct?
The, the, my understanding, my understanding was the loan was, was to buy kitchen equipment.
Okay, and it's closed. They now own it. Fermentum owns the building now, correct?
Um, I.
I, that's what it says in here, so I, I'm assuming that's correct. And they're buying kitchen equipment for that building, correct?
Okay.
I don't, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Continue, Mr. Schilling.
Thank you. Okay, again, this committee met on July twenty-ninth to consider two annexation petitions filed on behalf of Waco Historical Society, Inc., to annex roadway adjacent to Waco along South Market Street, South County Road twenty-five A. Both petitions were filed under the Type Two expedited process. As there are two petitions, each requires separate legislative consideration. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the Waco A Annexation, two point three zero zero acres, and related to the Waco B Annexation, point one two nine acres. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee supports emergency legislation.
Anyone have questions on that? Continue, please.
Okay. Okay, again, the committee met on May, on July twenty-ninth to consider the final plat of the Reserve at Cliff Oaks Phase One. This subdivision is located along Fennar Road north of the Edgewater subdivision. The committee will provide a majority and minority recommendation. The majority recommendation, uh, it is the recommendation of the undersigned that legislation be prepared accepting the final plat of the Reserve at Cliff Oaks Phase One, and that the dedication of the right-of-way at the, at the final plat is a, is in conformance to the approved preliminary plan. This recommendation is contingent upon the approval and recommendation of the Planning Commission. It is noted that on July thirty-first, the Planning Commission provided a unanimous recommendation that the final plat of Phase One be approved. And this was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce and Mrs. Snee. There is also a minority recommendation, and is a recommendation of the undersigned not to support the final plat of the Reserve of Cliff Oaks subdivision. It is the opinion of the undersigned that the subdivision plan should be amended to have shared multi-use recreational path along the boundary of the subdivision facing Fennar Road in lieu of sidewalk. The undersigned recognizes that this is a multi-recre- recognizes that a multi-use recreational path is not required under the, our, the current zoning code or, uh, or subdivision regulations. However, the path would support the city's desire to be an alternate transportation and bicycle-friendly community. These multi-use recreational paths in lieu of sidewalks are standard in many other communities. And that was respectfully submitted by myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
Anyone have any questions? You got comments?
I'll hold my comments on that. And then there's more notes here, okay, the, and this was after the, um, Planning Commission met. And as, again, the majority recommendation didn't change. It is a recommendation of the undersigned that the legislation be prepared accepting the final plat of the reserves at Cliff Oaks Phase One, and the dedication of the right-of-way as the final plat is in conformance to the approved preliminary plan. This recommendation is contingent upon the approval and recommendation of the Planning Commission. It is noted that on July thirty-first, the Planning Commission provided a unanimous recommendation that the final plat of Phase One be approved. And then again, the minority recommendation was also submitted, again, and is a recommendation of the undersigned that not to support the final plat of the Reserve of Cliff Oaks subdivision. It is the opinion of the undersigned that the subdivision plan should be amended to have a shared multi-use recreational path along the boundary of the subdivision facing Fennar Road in lieu of a sidewalk. The undersigned recognizes that a multi-use recreational path is not a, not required under the current zoning code or subdivision regulations. However, the path would support the city of Troy's desire to be an alternate transportation and bicycle-friendly community. These multi-use recreational paths in lieu of sidewalks are standard in many other communities. And again, that was respectfully submitted by myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
Streets and sidewalks committee, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, sir. On July twenty-nine, this committee met regarding bidding authorization for the South Stanfield Road constru- Road Reconstruction Phase Two project. The most recent estimate has taken into account cost increases being experienced. Information is in the detailed report regarding the project funding, which could require a future reappropriation. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the South Stanfield Road Reconstruction Phase Two project at a cost not to exceed one point seven nine five million dollars. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chair.
Any questions on that report? Thank you very much. We now come to citizens' comments. Citizens are allowed to have two minutes to come up and talk about anything that we have on our agenda tonight. If you come up, please give your name and address to Mrs. Knight for the record. And we welcome any input. Seeing none, we will move on to the resolutions. Mrs. Knight, could you please read R thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four, please?
Resolution number R thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing two point three oh acres, more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring emergency. This is for, uh, the annexation roadway adjacent to Rock Waco. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. Motion to suspend the reading of the rules by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Move to adopt by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, would you please read R thirty-nine, twenty twenty-four?
Resolution number R thirty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing two point three oh acres, more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the second piece of legislation associated to the annexation of roadway and, uh, for the larger parcels next to Waco. First reading.
Move for sus- to suspend?
Second.
Move to suspend the readings by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, could you please, will you please read R forty, twenty twenty-four?
Resolution number R forty, twenty twenty-four. Resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing two point three oh acres, more or less in Concord Township, to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third piece of legislation related to this parcel for roadway adjacent to Waco. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend the ru- rules, the readings by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes. To adopt. Second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read R forty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Resolution number R forty-one, twenty twenty-four. Resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing zero point one two nine acres, more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first piece of legislation related to the smaller parcel of roadway to be annexed adjacent to Waco. First we, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, could you please read Resolution forty-two, twenty twenty-four?
Resolution number R forty-two, twenty twenty-four. Resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing zero point one two nine acres, more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the second piece of legislation for the small, smaller parcel adjacent to Waco for roadway annexation. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Pierce moved to suspend, and Mr. Twist seconded. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. And our, Resolution R forty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mrs. Knight, would you please read that?
Resolution number R forty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing zero point one two nine acres, more or less in Concord Township, to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third piece of legislation related to the smaller parcel of roadway adjacent to Waco to be annexed. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Our last resolution of the evening, Resolution R forty-four, twenty twenty-four. Mrs. Knight, please read that.
Resolution number R forty-four, twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving the application of Fermentum Enterprises LLC for loan assistance from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This was recommended by the Loan Review Committee. This is the first reading. This is an emergency so that the equipment can be ordered upon the loan approval and closing. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please read the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Abstaining for personal reasons.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes. Move to adopt. Second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Abstaining.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, could you please read ordinance oh twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four?
Ordinance number oh twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance changing the zoning of parcel numbers D O eight, one oh one, eight one six, and D O eight, oh oh, six, oh oh oh, located at or near eight one, I'm sorry, five one eight East Water Street in the city of Troy, Ohio, from M two Light Industrial District to O R one Office Residence District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. At a public hearing this evening, this will now go before committee for recommendation next Monday. Second reading.
Very well. Could you please read ordinance oh twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four?
Ordinance number oh twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance determining to proceed with the South Stanfield Road Reconstruction Phase Two project and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the South Stanfield Road Reconstruction Project Phase Two. Cost not to exceed one million, seven hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. There is an O P W P C grant in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars towards the project. First reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
Move for suspended rules is Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, could you please read our last ordinance of the evening, oh thirty, twenty twenty-four?
Ordinance number oh thirty, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance accepting the final plat of the reserves at Cliff Oaks Subdivision Phase One in the city of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating right-of-way. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the first reading.
Move for suspension. Second.
Move to suspend is Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?[1605.67]
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Pierce. Seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, is there any communications or announcements this week?
No, sir.
Mayor Oda, do you have any comments?
Um, just a reminder that there's a public hearing or a town hall regarding the, uh, comprehensive plan. It'd be an update for the public, um, Thursday, August fifteenth from six to eight P M. at the Junior High Library. And, uh, city staff and the consultants will be there to help people understand the, the questions and concerns.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Attorney General here and Mr. Director of Law.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Friggy's not here. Mr. Twist? Mr. Phillips?
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Pierce?
I'd like to thank all the elected officials who were able to make it to the picnic for the staff members and helped serve them. I just want to say thank you for that.
Mrs. Marshall?
Um, no, sir.
Mr. Severt?
I just briefly, I had someone stop me, I'm kind of a baseball guy, and said that the bleachers on North Market Street have weeds growing out of them and that they looks pretty shoddy. I know that one of the criticisms of advertising was because they didn't want to interfere with the appearance of coming into town. So that's why you weren't allowed to put advertising on the fence walls. But I think having three foot weeds, uh, probably are as notoriously horribly looking as advertising. So if we could have someone clean that up, I would appreciate it.
Mrs. Snee?
Uh, just a reminder, I hope people will be able to join us for the Troy Mayor's Concert on Sunday, August eighteenth, um, which is always a great time.
Thank you.
There will be cannons.
There always cannons.
Mrs. Westfall?
Beware. I have nothing.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes, I have a few comments. Um, at our last committee meeting, uh, Mrs. Snee had asked me about our, um, asked me this question. She said, "Why did I want to file a minority report?" And my response, that is my prerogative to do so, was correct but incomplete. For whatever reason, I see things maybe a little bit differently. I see things as they could be or as they maybe should be. I look at the future and see what things might look like or should look like twenty-five years or so down the road. When I travel, I look at other cities and think, "This is a great idea. Can Troy do this?" And I'm not satisfied with the response. That is the way things have to be. My grandchildren, ages eleven and fourteen, live in Fishers, Indiana, a growing suburb on the north, northeast side of Indianapolis. They can ride their bikes to the end of their street, turn onto a multi-use recreational trail and ride to the ice cream store several miles away. All by trail. This trail wasn't built yesterday or paid for by grants, but was developed over the years as plat- as, as plat after plat was constructed. Whether a business or an industry or a subdivision, all are fronted by recreational trails. When a new plat is built, the first thing that is to be constructed is the trail. Before the interior streets, before the foundations, the infrastructure is completed. Kids in my ward and other wards in the city have no safe pass to ride, uh, anywhere to buy ice cream. Through lack of planning and forethought, they are confined to their subdivision. It was brought to our attention at this meeting that things like recreational trails cannot be negotiated in non-P D developments. Zoning and building codes restrict this. I find this hard to believe. The city negotiates all the time. Oh, you want to delay building a sidewalk in front of your newly constructed house for four years? Even though the plans and codes require it? Oh, okay, no problem. Mr. Developer, the city is willing to trade a quarter mile of sidewalks and curbs fronting your new subdivision in exchange for a left-hand turn lane. The curbs and sidewalks are required by zoning and building codes. The left-hand turn lane is not. And there's an older subdivision just up the street, three times the size of, of the, of, uh, that subdivision that has curbs and sidewalks fronting the subdivision with no left-hand turn lane at either entrance. And let's not even talk about the three-year-old building being powered by an extension cord stretched across an asphalt parking area where thirty thousand residents a year step or drive across the extension cord. I could give you more examples, but again, the city never negotiates or compromises our zoning and building codes. So do you like the way things are or do you like me? Looking to change the way the city approaches development, we can rectify the situation of the reserves of Cliff Oaks and look at the cost of expanding the preserved sidewalks facing the subdivision to the size of mul- of a multi-use recreational trail. The city oversizes water lines, sewer lines and pumping stations of developments on a regular basis and pays the costs. Why can't we do this here? Why not oversize the sidewalks to start a new recreational trail at this sixteen million dollar development? As the city of Troy will double in population over the next twenty-five years, Fennar Road will continue to develop. What if this new trail is the beginning of a, of a connector between downtown Troy and the Breckner Nature Center? Can you look twenty-five years into the future? Council can wait and see what, if any, changes will be made to the zoning and building codes sometime next year for future developments. But why wait? The city has recently accepted several annexations with more in the pipeline. Since council authorized review of the city's master plan and zoning codes, council has approved several code changes. Council could change the codes, uh, now to reflect our vision of future development. Multi-use recreational trails should be the standard bordering all new proposed subdivisions and developments. Developed projects or lots annexing into the city should fall under the same regulations. But council shouldn't stop there. Currently sidewalks are not required in certain zoning areas. The Experiment Farm Road area is a prime example. Yet some city residents face a difficult time finding transportation to work at our many industries, including out there at, off of inter- uh, off of Experiment Farm Road. Not every worker can afford or is eligible to drive a vehicle or even pay for the limited public transportation. These multi-use recreational trails could provide those without affordable or reliable transportation a safe option to get to work via bike or walking. These trails should be considered as a cost of doing business in the city of Troy for any developer or anyone interested in annexing land into the city. Council can no longer sit here and hope that the city will make the right decisions. No compromises, no negotiations. Plan and build for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I appreciate that explanation, which I'd asked about. My concern, um, at the committee meeting was on this particular item, that if we were to hold this up, we might possibly, um, by changing the requirements to the developer, we might possibly open the city up to some kind of legal action. And as a council member, I think it's our responsibility also to, um, look to the regulations that we have in place and consider protecting the city from some kind of, um, suit that might be filed by a, a developer that was held to requirements that we no longer have. But I certainly look forward to a discussion of recreational trails and sidewalks and the kinds of things that we'll have at our comprehensive plan update meeting on August fifteenth for the, uh, town hall where those things can come up because that is, uh, certainly something that we want to do when we think about planning for the future.
Anyone else?
Uh, if I may, um...
Mr. Phillips?
There was a community to the south of us that did exactly as, uh, Mr. Schilling is, was asking us to do. And subsequently, the developer did sue that, uh, city and walked away with a few million dollars because the council voted illegally to deny, uh, the development. So putting ourselves into a legal position is, number one, not fiscally, uh, correct to do and puts the city entity on the hook for legal action that is just wasteful and illegal. So it, it's nonsensical to do that. I do agree that, uh, with what Mrs. Snee says about looking at the, uh, the items coming up in the future here that are, are being considered and changes and that sort of thing as a very positive, uh, move. And so, uh, wanting to do that at the moment, we just can't do. In the future, we will be able to do it. That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else? Staff, have any comments? I guess it's to the audience. Anybody in the audience would like to come up and come to the podium, give your name and address, speak about whatever you'd like to speak about?
Steve Hennerston at nine seventy-five Dickerson. I support Mr. Schilling. I understand all the issues about it. What I'm concerned about is, oh, as long as everybody follow- as long as everybody follows the rules, we cannot say a word. If that's the case, I wonder what you're all doing here, what all the committees are about. There should be some human people that say there's a better way. And there's ways of doing that without having to get sued. And if necessary, spend the twenty grand and hire an attorney. We've done that before. We have a law director. There's ways of getting this done in a cooperative way with developers. They're not trying to build a junky piece of, of real estate, I don't think. And if they are, we don't want them. Why don't we just ask them, "Can you do this? It will cost a lot of money." And we don't know the answer to that. But I think just following things by rope means that you're all superfluous. Planning commission's superfluous. As long as you follow the rules, there's not a darn thing we can do about it. Now, if you say that out loud, does it make sense to you? Doesn't make any sense to me, but I can't vote here, so good luck. I'll take any questions, but I don't hear any.
Thank you, Mr. Hennerston. Anyone else?
Uh, Gary Weaver, thirteen thirteen Skylark Drive. Um, I had a concern. Um, my wife and I are bike riders and a few years back, we wanted to do something for the city since we have a nice bike path over there. And so we donated a gazebo and the bike station out at Miami George Golf Course. And it's been used quite a bit because I'm out there almost all the time playing golf. And, you know, we thought walkers, runners, bikers, everybody could use it. But in the last month or so, uh, that hadn't been pretty much possible because we have a homeless gentleman, pretty much made that his home out there. He lives and sleeps on top of the table. Seen him roll out a mat, sleep there during the day. He was there again this morning when I, uh, well, this afternoon when I left the golf course, has his stuff scattered all over. Well, you're not really going to get many people stopping there to use that. Um, I've already been told that, you know, there's nothing we can do about it because it's public property. So I just wanted to voice my concern about that. Um, the only other concern I had was, um, almost two years ago, um, someone cut all the tools off the bike station, which is used, you know, there's wrenches and things like that for bikers to stop and work on their, uh, bike. Well, all those things were cut off, vandalized. So I went to the city and re- I let them know, but it's been going on two years now and they still haven't, um, replaced anything. So I just wanted to voice my concern. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just with respect to Mr. Weaver, I know that there's, uh, with city staff and myself, there's, uh, some upcoming meetings to discuss some of his concerns. So I, I don't have any answers, but your concerns have been heard.
Anyone else? Hello?
Uh, my name is Ken Willis.